We'll go ahead. It looks like this is probably all we're going to have for the work session. So we're going to go ahead and start. We've got, the first thing on the work session is a proposed amendment to section 123, paragraph one of the zoning ordinance to allow accessory structures on properties developed with single-story dwellings to measure five times of the height of the dwelling. Debbie is going to do a brief presentation on this.
Yes, I just wanted to bring the Planning Commission up to speak. I received a request for zoning appeals as they had received an application back in May and ultimately they denied a request by a prior for an accessory building to exceed the height. The purpose of the denial was based on the state code criteria that they must find in order to approve the ordinance. And it was found that the request was considered a hardship that was grounds for the granting of a As an option to that, the BZA BZA asked the Planning Commission and that you all do this evening, it will go forward to City Council, but they are asking for a code amendment which would give some leniency to single-story homes in residential For those properties that are developed with a single-story home only, not two-story homes, they are asking that the code be amended to allow an accessory structure to exceed one and a quarter times the height of the main house. This would allow for some little bit taller accessory buildings, especially in neighborhoods with our older homes which have not quite as a high of a pitch. And we do have several of those, especially in our western precinct. And it would also allow for some leniency as to those folks that would like to elevate their accessory buildings to get out of the flood zone. That would help them to eliminate the need to have to go the board did feel like that there could be a precedent set for this, that could be multiple requests similar to the one that they made. And that's the reason why they're asking to the code. So with that said, what we are doing this evening is that we are asking for the Planning Commission's feedback. And we will determine from that as to where it will go, whether it goes to City Council or you know, whether or not it's going to come back to the Planning Commission for a public hearing or it goes to City Council. So with that said, I ask for comments.
We don't have money to give you. No. I don't understand why.
It does seem like it's a little bit particularly in light of if you wanted to raise it for to
For the addition?
Yes.
To the Planning Department?
Yes, it would go through application process.
Right, and they have to submit what they are doing and how it relates to property.
I actually have a couple of questions for Debbie, if you don't mind. Now, I asked Karen, because in my head, I'm trying to visualize this. So I'm driving around Pecosin, trying to see if there are some examples that might be grabbed in or got approved previously, because trying to visualize it. So there were some, I asked around, and there were a couple that people knew about. So I was able to drive by and both of them that I found, I drive by them very often and I was never, I never noticed that this accessory structure was taller than the dwelling. They were very well done so that they matched the facade of the house or they, you know, had this siding or the pitch that was very similar. I don't know if there are any other ones throughout the city that we could drive by and take a look at just for some perspective to visualize. Karen always said that she didn't know of any off the top of her head, but it would be nice if there were some examples existing in the city to be able to see those. And I also had a question about the aesthetics of these being built. And I don't know if there were any ordinances restricting height, say if someone had a large RV or a large boat and they just wanted a metallic pole barn with sheet steel, if that would be in a different category than, say, a workshop or something.
No, they are not, they are considered an accessory structure by the same requirements as accessory buildings. In most cases, to be perfectly honest with you, way around this provision is to attach the accessory building to the main house by a breezeway. Then it becomes a part of the house. So even if you usually see an accessory building that appears to be taller than the house, if it's, if you cannot see the action, then you're not going to understand that it's actually an accessory. In this particular instance, the applicant, it was not really feasible for them to attach it by breezing, they were bound by that requirement. In this particular instance, I believe that the house is approximately 18 and a half feet tall. So that gives you a good example of some of the older homes and what the criteria is for homes. This particular house was located in Roberts Acres. So, and they were asking to build something that was 18 feet taller than the house, which would not have been obtrusive, because the board is reasonable, but when you apply the criteria, it was very difficult for them to make the decision to approve the application.
And I can tell you, so folks that I spoke with, in particular who have workshops, would like to perhaps have them raised, so if they do flood, they don't have to worry about picking up their tools or moving their heavy equipment. So people that I've just spoke with can, can definitely relate to wanting to have a workshop or an accessory structure that might be a little bit taller, even if their house might not have been raised.
This would only apply to single-story.
Okay, okay.
It would not apply to two stories. So if, if we said that we wanted to entertain this again and hold a public how do you does this and they are submitting their and everything, do they, are letters This case, they would not.
Well, are you talking about for the public hearing?
Well, public hearing, I know they, they probably would not, because you wouldn't know who it would be, but I'm thinking if it were
It's considered by rights.
By neighbors.
And there is a restriction, I mean, it's only for one, 1.25 feet above, one and a half, 1.4, 1.25 times the height of the main structure.
Well, I, I don't have any problem with having it come back to us.
Public hearing?
Off the top of my head, I don't have any particular problem with it. At the, when we bring it before the commission for a vote, I would like to get a little bit more of the, the background logic as to why the rules are where they are now. Whether, whether that was just something that was arbitrary or whether there is some specific reason for the rules that they are today. But other than that, I'm perfectly willing to, to talk about and consider it.
I can help you a little bit with that, because I was actually the original for this section of the ordinance. And the purpose of it, to answer your question, on Fremont Drive, I believe that there was an accessory building that was two-story above a one-story house. It was, there was a one-story house there, and it was excessive. So at the time that the ordinance was created for the height, they also imposed a very restrictive setback requirement to where setback was based on the total height of the accessory building. So a 20-foot tall accessory building, you had to maintain a 20-foot setback. Later, as time went on, they realized how excessive that was, so they reduced that setback to what we have today, which is a seven and a half foot for any less than 13 feet tall. And if it's over 13 feet tall, it's a 15-foot setback. So that was the purpose of it, was to avoid these extreme bulky buildings measuring so much taller than the primary residence. That's the reason why when staff was tasked with possibly presenting, you know, this amendment to the Planning Commission, we kept that in mind and we checked with other localities and the other localities, basically, they allow for that 1.25 times the height.
Okay.
So that kind of controls it.
Consensus that we want this to come before planning?
Yes, yes, ma'am. All right, Dan. I will go back to the zoning administrator and ask for his preferred method of tracking it through Planning Commission and then I cannot guarantee you that it'll be at your August meeting, but it might be at
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, the next discussion items are discussion of the community survey results after tabulation by members of the community participation team as they relate to the comprehensive plan update process. And I think Danan is going, Danan, you're going to take it from here, aren't you? You're going to do the next, do the overview of the current comprehensive plan, too?
Yes.
All right.
I don't have any slides for this one, but I can just give a brief explanation of what's in your packet. So this is the preliminary results for the comprehensive plan public survey. This was submitted to you, I believe, two months ago for review. We took the completed survey, which is the first two pages of this item in your packet. It's a four-page survey. And we began pilling this out beginning on June 7th to all Pecosin households. That would be about over 4,700 addresses. And we received surveys. We asked that the surveys be completed and sent back to us by June 20th, but we continued to accept late surveys and tabulate them through July the 10th. So these were tabulated by the community participation team as well as the steering committee and a number of volunteers. And we did that for a series of three weeks. We received a grand total of 1,303 responses. Twenty-five to about a 30% response rate for the citizens of the city, which is pretty much in keeping with the response rate that we have had in the past with comprehensive plan surveys. So we have the initial results for a number of the questions for the survey. I'd like to thank Commissioner Emmett for helping to prepare the graphs and the totals that you see in your packet. These are the totals for all of the numerical questions, the agree/disagree questions and the ranking questions that we included in the survey. And you'll see they have graphs associated with them to point those results out visually. However, at the end of your packet, there is a brief memorandum explaining that we were not able to present the write-in responses to some of the questions in the survey in time. We had five write-in questions as well as a comment section at the end of the survey for people to fill out. Unfortunately, we had a pretty hefty response rate on that. We received around 1,000 responses for each of the five questions, as well as around 650 public comments. Displaying them just in a general format, just dumping them all into a text file and printing them out, each question would come out to around 40 pages of information. So instead of printing out a book for all of you to go through today, we've just decided to ask for your guidance as how you would like us to present that information. But just as an example, we've included a random sample of the write-in responses on the last two pages of your packet for one of the write-in questions. This gives you kind of a general idea of the number and the scope of the responses that we are talking about.
Commissioner Travis's tabulation, did you want to talk?
Yes, I mean, if you would like to explain.
Well, I just, for some folks who can see it, and I have a copy there, just over the weekend, I, I played with the first question, which was pretty and quite frankly, again, I have to thank Angie, because she's the heard it all into a Word file so I could read it. There were over 34 pages of comments to that question. I have no idea how many comments there were, because the questions, the way they were set up, a person could give no answer, one answer, in some cases, eight, 10, 12 comments to a question. And that's okay, but there's a lot of them. The methodology that I attempted to use here was, and it just won, was to look at the comments that really stood, there were the greatest majority of numbers. Why, I stood out and told them, it's the greatest majority of numbers. It's not designed to be any kind of a roadmap or suggestions or anything, that is just the ones that I saw on question number one, which was a pretty general question, because it was basically like, what kinds of commercial things would you like to see in the city of Pecosin? Without belaboring the point, I would point out that it's purely speculative on my part, but reading the answers, I think some people really answered, this is what I would like to see. And I think some people answered more like, here are some ideas you could think about. And, you know, there's nothing wrong with that, but they are a little bit different. I did not attempt to make a distinction here, but some of those, I think, were more like, you know, maybe we could use a Dairy Queen or a Chick-fil-A or a Steakhouse or whatever, it's kind of all over the place. They may have been That's, that is an approach. If, if the, the city or the planning commission liked to see the CPT look at the other five questions in that sort of format, I have not taken it back to them. I would take some directions back to them if that's I think that the questions two, three, four, and five will be, there would probably be as many answers, but I don't think it's be a broader range. So they'll be a little bit easier. I think number six will be monumental task, because again, that is all over the place, which really up to what the group, if they think it's, if they think it's going to be useful. If I can, let me throw another, change just a little bit, because I wanted to bring this up and didn't do it earlier. In the initial, the data that, the graphs and all that Angie produced, these are the surveys that I looked at, and I did about 150 of the entries here, on the ranking questions, you know, where's 1, 2, 3, 4, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, or whatevers, I would say some of the respondents did not quite understand the direction. I think the team did their best to capture what those respondents meant, but I would have to say that I wouldn't put quite as much faith in the answers to those questions as I would in the general agree/disagree questions, because I didn't see in the ones that I did, I didn't see any mix up there. I think responses in the ranking questions are representative. The big question is, now what?
I'll just add on to that and say, what Commissioner Travis has done with summarizing those questions is similar to what was done with comprehensive plan surveys in the past. We just take the write-in answers and then just try and divide them up into categories.
Doing that, it's a little bit subjective, trying to decide what buckets you're going to use when you start reading through them and start trying to come up with categories or buckets to put these in. But looking at this, it's very easy to read and see what some of the trends are. Although there is some subjectivity in it, I do think that it's very usable.
If it, if it is the commission's desire and/or the city's desire, I can ask the rest of the team that are taking on the other five questions. I have not done that, because I'm not very fast. Okay, I'll tell you that. Not very technologically capable, but that's a good 10 hours worth of work, by far. And more beers than I care to admit.
So let me ask you this, as as part of the steering committee, so this categorization really kind of falls, falls into the analysis category, so would you judge CPT participants as part of this analysis would be in the purview of the CPT rather than the Planning Commission or steering? If you're comfortable with that, then.
I think it's really up to what, if, if that's what the planning commission or the city would like to ask them to do, I will do that. If, if, if the group was to come back and say, no, we don't really need that, then I'm not going to ask them to put it in the table. So I just thought to put it on the table. I do agree with you, as I said to the number of the CPT members a couple of times, I don't think their job is analysis, but their job is reporting. And to give you 34 or 40 pages of comments is a form of reporting, I suppose, but
Not particularly helpful.
Not particularly helpful. I would like to see us be able to
But that being said, the, the comments in the raw form would be available in the library or somewhere? Yes, okay.
Right, we still have hard copies, which would be available to anyone who inquires. We were under a lot of, you know, working very quickly to try and get this to present to you today. However, our intention is to try and publish all of these comments online, both the total of the comments as well as the summarizations of the received responses.
In a sense. In a nice way.
Oh, yes, oh, absolutely.
Okay. I, I don't know. I, I think
Much more that would do. Just as an option, Dan and I were talking the other day, and it's a possibility keep the written comments in a particular questions arise on relative to the questions that were the right You're not really doing a summation of what Bill has done here, but if, I really like this, I think it's very nicely done. But it is very time-consuming, and we really on with the updated comp plan, so if the Planning Commission interested in continuing with this idea, I think we're still going to move forward with making revisions to the comp plan.
And I think that the CPT would be interested in following through and having a summary that the Planning Commission is, is open. I think it would be a little bit of nice summation.
Well, the only thing now, I'm, I'm kind of trying I like the idea that Debbie just said, because that way this took approximately 10 hours to do.
I'm rather slow. I, I will say that there are some members that are faster.
It's hard to, it is And I'm just wondering how much benefit is that really going to, I mean, we thoughts of, of the, you know, the questions this survey? I don't know. I mean, that's the question.
It's a very good question. That's the question.
We've got to weigh that out.
We didn't go any further than, or I didn't suggest the team they go any further than this. I think that kind of one of those choices that you make, ultimately step is to updates to the comp plan and to see how much information
If we needed it, we would certainly be able to get it. And review them and look over them. I mean, we could, and certainly City Council could. I'm kind of leaning not towards doing that.
Do you feel more comfortable if we talked about this? Don't have a work session, session scheduled for that evening?
So in the interim, would council be, or, sorry, would the commission be amicable if a CPT member wanted to take a stab at this, or would you rather them stay out of the analysis until the next meeting before a decision is made?
I think right now, probably, we need to off on that, of, until we kind of come to a conclusion as to what direction
You've been through this many more times than
Yeah, I have. And I, and I do, I mean, I just think probably let's I sit a little further and if, you know, the others feel way, I'm just thinking about the, the amount value that it will have when we have comments that we can refer to, we won't have them if we need them. And I time and read every one of them. And somebody would make a copy for me to carry on and read if I asked.
Yes, we would.
All right. You think, let's, let's wait then until the next meeting.
I would at least suggest, if I may, that, you know, I'm not that technically capable. She converted all this Excel words into a Word file.
She did a great job.
Is what I used, and I think it's at least what that sort of conversion, if anybody's going to go back to, looking at it in the Excel files is very difficult.
Yes.
So I think that whether, whether or not they go through, you go through the analysis, I think the converting it
Yes.
She's already done, she may have done more than one. She's already done question number one, just to a Word file. I think that is a much more usable file. I don't think you shared that with you, did she?
I had versions of that, it's pretty straightforward to do, and it is very, much more helpful at reading the comments.
Yes, yeah, they say reading the comments off the Excel is, is extremely difficult.
Yeah.
Whomever is going to use them.
All right, so with that All right, so the next thing.
So, the next thing...
You're ready?
Yes.
This will be a PowerPoint presentation.
Okay.
We're ready.
I'm told that we're apparently, we're having some difficulty with our projector, so I don't know if it will be displayed up here or not, but I will try to summarize my presentation, and feel free to stop me at any time if you have any questions. So, the following is a review of our current comprehensive plan. The current comp plan was accepted in the year 2009. The last major update to the plan was in 2011. The scope of our current plan is from 2008 to 2028, so it's a 20-year timeframe. The formatting of the current plan, a lot of the text and a lot of the basic background information, history information and the like, is derived from previous comp plans, specifically the one that was approved in 1999. And our current plan is divided into several chapters. There are the chapters on background and population, as well as housing, economics, the environment, community services, infrastructure and land use, and I will go through those now. So, the first two chapters are a background chapter and also the population chapter. They present an overview of the comprehensive plan, a history of Picousen, and a number of population statistics. They also describe the comprehensive plan update, as well as the process of citizen input and surveying activities that took place at the time. And finally, there are a number of population statistics. The current estimates in our plan are from either 2007 projections or are derived from the 2000 census, so we will need to update those for our process. The housing chapter, first and foremost, recognizes that a large majority of the city housing stock is single-family homes. Over 83% is single-family residential, and that Picousen is close to being built out. However, it makes a point to discuss affordable or workforce housing, then brings in the results of the citizen's survey, which in particular found that there was low support from the population for multifamily housing, and there was some support for affordable starter homes or elderly housing, but not in a multifamily format. Therefore, the current comprehensive plan recommends that we diversify our housing stock with single-family attached dwellings, such as duplexes or condominiums, that are mixed in with more traditional detached, single-family subdivisions. Our economics chapter, the economic growth and development projections in the current comp plan were based on data from 2003 to 2004, so they are significantly out of date with our current economic situation. The plan recommends the promotion of economic development to diversify our tax and employment base, as well as to lower residential taxes. A number of proposals that are discussed in the plan were the creation of a mixed-use town center along Victory Boulevard around City Hall Avenue, the development or redevelopment of our waterfront areas such as Messick Point, incentives for existing businesses, as well as specific plans targeted towards attracting new industries. Our environmental chapter recommends addressing sea level rise and coastal flooding in future planning efforts. In our current comp plan, there is not a significant plan to address these, and they specifically mentions that it will be addressed in future updates. Environmental chapter also recommends protection of wetlands, high development standards for stormwater management, as well as the preservation of shorelines, and a number of items for doing this, such as the promotion of living shorelines, no-wake zones, waterfront redevelopment, and other activities that minimize erosion. Our community services chapter starts with a summary of city government structure, summaries of our school system, public works, library and other departments, and recommends appropriate maintenance and funding for those departments. The chapter proposes a new park for Picousen's Western District, lighting and equipment upgrades for existing parks, expanded public water access, and the exploration of a small public beach as an option. It also discusses that there is high citizen support for sidewalks and proposes new sidewalks on main roads, specifically With Creek Road, Victory Boulevard, and Little Florida Road. It also suggests for the creation of a public nonprofit community center. The infrastructure chapter recommends a variety of roadway widenings, improvements, and sidewalks for main thoroughfares and intersections. It recommends ditch pipings and greater BNP maintenance to preserve stormwater management, and it suggests that study and possible improvement to city sanitary sewer pump systems. And finally, the land use chapter recognizes Picousen's character as a low-density suburban residential community. It suggests that further commercial or R&amp;D development be concentrated within the Big Woods and With Creek Road corridor. It suggests redevelopment of waterfront commercial districts. Other suggestions include the redevelopment of South Lawson Park, the creation of Picousen Blueways or water trails, a possible boat landing at Hunts Neck Road, and finally, a city hall professional park of village commercial mixed-use zoning around City Hall Avenue. So, that is the summary of the current comp plan, and I'll be happy to take any questions that you may have.
Okay.
Is it on?
It sounds like it's on now.
There we go.
It was me. There's a ghost in this building. We are fenced of it. We've had some strange things happen around here. Yeah. But nevertheless, what we're looking for is some guidance as to how you would like to review the plan once it's edited by chapter. We're going to edit it by chapter, but do you want us to present it to one chapter at a time or several chapters? We just want some guidance from you on how to proceed with its presentation. It is my goal to try to complete this by the end of the year. That's my goal. That doesn't mean that that's your goal. So, with that back in mind, you know, we've got three months or four months left through, and in my past experience, once you start working on a document, you're better off just to keep rolling through it instead of having long delays. So, you know, at this point, I'll just ask for your guidance. Based on Dan's presentation on the summary, you have a good idea as to what each chapter entails, and I can tell you right up, you know, the land use chapter and the environmental is going to be the most complicated. Other ones are fairly simple. It's more or less just an update of the words, I think, and statistical information.
I was just going to say, I think the land use and environmental would probably warrant one question.
Good, yes.
And the others, I think, hope that tonight are pretty quick. Land use and environmental are the two that will consume time, so they certainly should be, I think.
If I can, my suggestion would be, you know, I did this, was on this once before, depending on staff's time availability, I would suggest no more than two chapters, with the possible exception of the intro chapter at a meeting. And my logic for that is so, because we are going to have, we are going to have public hearings for each, when they come before the planning commission. And I think if we try to do too many topics at a meeting, we stand a good chance to get both our wires crossed on the planning commission and perhaps not get, not serve the public correctly in being able to let them concentrate on specific topics. So, I think there's, to my perspective, there is some advantage to trying to probably keep it down to no more than about, as I say, with the possible exception of introduction, to two chapters at a meeting and maybe splitting up the two that you talked about.
And we're going to have to do...
Yes, probably do work sessions, but I, yeah, I've talked about when we, when we do have a work session, when we do have the planning commission, we do have the public hearing. Yeah, so we kind of keep on topic a little bit, because if not, we can get all over the place.
Oh, yeah. Definitely. All right. So, we could have work sessions at your, starting with your September meeting. So, that would be September, October. We run into November and December meetings because they have to be combined. So, with that time schedule, I don't know that we can have a public hearing before the end of the year.
Would have been if we have a, I mean, would have been if we have a work session when it's not a meeting. I know that's probably not a pleasant situation.
Isn't that what we did before?
We certainly did.
It seems to me that we met, we met like every two weeks or something like that to be able to keep up with it. And, you know, I know I, I'm sort of speaking for other people, but I'm not, I have no objection to doing that to try to keep it. If it really, the real question is what...
Which all can do.
Debbie and Danny can keep up with it.
I can certainly do it. I mean, because I remember we had to do it to get through it.
It seems to me we did it every two weeks.
Yeah.
Well, let's back up for just a moment. Do you all agree with the time schedule that I have set to try to get completed by the end of the year?
I would like to do that. That would be a good thing if we could do that.
I think it's important to set a goal.
To set that goal to work towards.
So, we technically talk into Dan in advance, but I'm possibly even have maybe a work session at the end of all... But we'll, we'll talk it. I don't want to put him on the spot either. So, what we could do is schedule a work session every other week, starting at 6:00 PM. We probably are not going to have this room of the city council that will start meeting twice a month again and stuff. That's a conflict, so we would have to look at a different day. Thursdays, I do know this room is fairly... I'm that with the city manager's office. So, how...
Works for me.
Yeah.
Okay.
It's better than Monday's.
Is it?
Five, it's sometimes difficult, so, I mean, eight.
Angie, you have a complicated schedule, I'm sure.
I, oh, this is certainly worthwhile, I think, I think, every other Thursday, and it's, it's a limited time, so you can make anything work for several months.
Appreciate that very much. Thank you. We will go back and we will look at our schedules and we will follow. I do need to confirm the availability of the room. Try to establish a schedule. As have been extremely helpful this evening, I certainly appreciate your...
It wasn't many of us, but we did good.
My only other thought would be, off of the topic is, you know, for a small city, our comp plan is pretty doggone long and laborious. There's a lot of information in there which is just general information. First of all, you know, I don't know how up-to-date that is, how current it is, and I wonder if it would be possible to consider taking some of that information, I'm not picking on anybody, but take, for instance, the school system administration information, and putting it in an appendix and pulling it out of the basic plans, when somebody's looking at the basic plan, they're looking at something less than 340 pages, because that is really cumbersome document to get through. I don't know if that's possible, I don't know if it's practical, and I don't know if it meets any guidelines, but it's a thought that I've had for some time. It is just an awfully lengthy document for a tiny little city.
We've heard that several times. And, you know, the parks and recreation, they have their own... So, that's certainly something that can be looked at. We can even try to look at, look at it through this. I do agree, it's very cumbersome for as long.
I think it would make up, it would make the periodic updates easier if you're working with a more compact document.
And I think that, you know, it would be good if the city could get on a scale to update, if nothing else, maybe the statistical information periodically, more frequently than every five to 10 years. What we have found in the results of the survey is that, for the most part, comments are fairly similar to what we've received. So, the overall theme, I think, for this community is to make things the way that they are. So, we do need to think about smart growth and how we... But clearly, I think we could update... As something to definitely take a look at in the future.
I would have to agree with you that there's nothing really drastically different in most of the comments ratings from the last couple of comp plans, which I think should be a compliment to the folks who did the last couple of comp plans as well, because obviously they did a good job on, on, you know, documenting the community's input and the community's concerns, and I think that this particular survey helped to validate that more than something that came up as something new.
We've had some very good citizen groups in the past.
Absolutely.
We really have. We've been lucky for people.
And I'm, I'm sorry, I apologize. So, by the end of the year, if you want to have the comp plan update complete, would we be able to have the resources to update the GIS, the zoning and the future land use layers prior to the end of the year as well? That update, the comp plan update?
Should be a part of the process. If that plan goes to city council, it should be complete. Planning commission to city council, though, now that's not to say that changes, but that should be up to date as well. If we run into problems, we will certainly address those.
Six minutes where we can, you can do...
So, our meeting, regular session will start in, at 7:00 o'clock.
Always, the seat is always a different height, Kevin. Now, it feels like I'm... We kind of show what we got up. All right.
All right.
Don't think so, I'm thinking no.
Be on the first item.
Okay, I think we'll be okay, because he's gonna be here.
Oh, I'm not speaking. Well, I mean, vote.
Glad you're doing that. Oh, can, is he one of them that helped us? Oh, sure, thank you so much for helping.
That's great.
All right.
There were many people who didn't understand. And so they couldn't consider that as accurate, portraying a lot of our people's feelings. That was pretty much their solution. So I don't, I hope they don't try to.
Oh, is that all you need?
Oh, hey, you don't want to hear that?
Thank you for helping, we really appreciate it. Good. Feel welcome.
Been warned.
I think there's enough, I think, I would estimate that maybe 10% or less didn't get the idea, they didn't have the right.
But we won. Okay. All right, and we, are we, can we be hard? So everything's fine, okay. Okay, that's fine. Well, we don't have many here tonight.
Well, we have two people that aren't here.
Yeah, we've got two that aren't here. So we've, yeah, we've got two packets.
I mean, I've been having a big time. I hope, because I've been trying to do some, because I've been having some issues with schools or something, and I don't want.
This is what I'm thinking.
But people didn't have a lot of the best, we just got started. So we did make a comment, they've taken all the time and converted it to a word file, so that it's a lot easier to read. But right now, we do have work, and merging, proposing to defer over three to five, to do some counting, they say. They can't afford to mix it up, they're not the kids anyway, so it's a point. And then that's just going to be a big issue. Suggestions from these people in council.
Well, we covered two. The only thing, the only thing we have left is I think that one of us, and maybe it'd be me, neither you or me, the closing sessions here.
Can I shoot at the large park? I know, you asked me to do that. Okay, good, yeah. Yeah, I know you, I work with a group in San Francisco right now, and see, there's still five of us in there. I was working with them.
It's okay, you're fine, you're fine.
Yeah, who wrote that, did they?
Well, and I think they have their packets.
It's kind of weird. In North Carolina, it should have all.
I've got some ideas, let me see.
He knows what's up. I'm gonna keep pressing the button. Well, you know what's up? Yeah.
This is, and you can tell when you read it, there are some dated things in there, and at first it drove me nuts, but then it has some good things in there, too.
I'll tell you. Hey, so, go, go. I need this as one extra one I have.
How you doing tonight?
Good, how are you?
Oh, totally forgetful.
Oh, no.
How you doing, sir?
How was the first session?
Yeah, yeah. We're working with a group in San Francisco right now. There are two of us.
He did. You're all down.
Somebody say, you're meeting tonight?
I'm trying to get everything done. I'm trying to get it all done before.
Well, he's not gonna get to see the council, but we'll.
So, I am, I don't know if you had a chance to look through the.
I'll be quick. Everyone else will.
I actually turned out the results of the survey stuff, and I'm pretty good, shot here for five minutes.
Results so much, but how do you get to the data? Do I win this? Here, I'll give you something. Two words. At the end of each. That's the only thing that I write.
Next month, and I'll do it. There are not.
Okay, she looks great. Roberts here, Janice is here.
Okay. I'll just say. I haven't been to a reason, but I guess.
Well, it was one of the things she put.
Absolutely.
And I just wondered if you.
Oh, absolutely. We wanted, because.
Just make a big presentation at the beginning of this.
Because you have to count the buckets.
Okay, I think, I think we are going to get a high sign here shortly. Good evening to those here in the audience and those at home. We welcome you to the Pecoson Planning Commission meeting for Monday, July 17th, 2017. And at this time, I'm calling this meeting to order. And tonight, Commissioner Jay Tetlow will give us the invocation and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Jay?
Please follow me at the Lord's Prayer. Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come. Thy will be done on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread. And forgive us our trespasses. As we forgive those who trespass against us. Lead us not temptation. Deliver us evil. For thine is the kingdom, the power, and glory forever. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, in the name of liberty, justice, and moral.
Thank you, Jay.
You're welcome.
Okay, the first item on our agenda tonight is the approval of the minutes for the regular session, June 19th, 2017. Do I have a motion to accept these minutes as written?
So moved?
Second.
Second.
Okay, we'll go ahead and take the vote on that, please.
Aye.
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 All right, okay, the motion is passed, thank you very much. All right, and that's the only thing we have to approve there, so we will go ahead and open the audience for visitors at this time. And the audience for visitors is, if you have something you wanted to address the Planning Commission regarding something other than the public hearing items, so this would, this would be your opportunity to come forward and do so. And if you would like to, please come to the podium, give us your name and address, and speak into the mic so you can be heard at home. So at this time, we open this public hearing and ask you to come if you have something you'd like to speak about. Okay, don't see anybody that seems like they're interested in taking part in this audience of visitors, and we will move on, we'll close that and move on to the public hearings tonight. And the first item that we have on, under our public hearing is proposed amendment to the city's land use map to designate the zoning of Economic Development Authority, EDA, property, Pecoson Tax Map Parcel Number 18, Perens 1, 119, located on Victory Boulevard as General Commercial, G C. Now, the presentation on this.
It's gonna be given by Dan, but he's gonna do a combined presentation, items one and two.
We will take them up separately, but he's gonna combine the, okay, that sounds good, because they do, sir.
Second item pertains to a rezoning of the same parcel from Research and Development to General Commercial, which is a request by the Pecoson Economic Development Authority as the owners of the property.
Okay. We'll do the public hearings separately.
Yes.
So I will begin this presentation. Again, I am sorry that our projector is having difficulties, but the maps that I am referring to are, should be in your packets. So I will be presenting the presentation on both the Future Land Use Map Amendment and also the rezoning request for the EDS, the parcel 181119, part of the EDA assemblage. So I'll begin with some background on the EDA assemblage. It consists of six parcels directly north of Victory Boulevard and directly north of City Hall Avenue, which is where we are right now. If these windows were open, you would be able to look out across the road and see them right there. They are the cleared areas north of Victory Boulevard. These parcels were purchased piecemeal by the EDA between 2002 and 2006. Historically, they have been marketed as a whole for commercial economic developments. The parcel in question, number 181119, is the furthest westward of this EDA assemblage. It was acquired in March of 2005. It is currently zoned R and D on both the zoning and future land use maps. It is a rectangular parcel of around two and a half acres. So within your packet, there is a map showing the EDA assemblage. It is the blue parcel shown on the west. The remaining five parcels in the assemblage are to the east of it, and they are all zoned General Commercial. So there are two proposed requests today. One is the rezoning of parcel 181119 from Research and Development to General Commercial. The other is a Future Land Use Map request to designate this parcel from Research and Development to General Commercial to complement the rezoning request. Now, the EDA has done this in order to try and rezone all of these properties to General Commercial to make sure they are all in the same zoning category. They have made this request in order to try and market it more clearly and to make it easier to market the property for development. We can just have some background on these two land use categories. General Commercial is designated for general commercial development within the Big Woods area. It is a combination of our existing B1 and B2 commercial zoning categories. The G C district encourages consolidation of roadway access and parking, as well as stormwater features, and it has a higher quality of landscaping, architectural standards than our other two commercial districts. And it was developed specifically for development within the Big Woods area. On the other hand, the Research and Development District was for office, manufacturing, and light industrial development within the Big Woods. Specifically, it was for promoting campus-style planned industrial or office development. These two zoning categories were developed and created with their present boundaries within the Big Woods in 1995, and those boundaries have not changed much since. And within your packets, there will be a map of the current zoning vicinity map with the EDA assemblage marked out as a black rectangle. You'll see the western parcel is designated Research and Development, and eastern parcels are designated G C. This is roughly reflected the same way in the Future Land Use Map, which shows the Research and Development parcels in blue and the G C parcels in purple. And that is the end of my presentation, so I'll be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Okay, thank you, Dan. Anyone have any questions of Dan? Okay, because if not, we'll go ahead and open the public hearing on first amendment, first proposed amendment. So if you do have something you wanted to say during this public hearing, come to the podium, give us your name and address. Okay, no one wishes to speak, we'll close this public hearing, and we will take this
I'll go ahead and, and jump in, and I've been following the EDA working group for the, for the EDA resolution in conjunction with, with council, and I was kind of going back and forth with this, quite a bit actually, between thinking that the rezoning should be a contingent on the outcome of that resolution, and no, they're independent, so I was really going back and forth on that, and, and I have ended up thinking that although they are interconnected, I do think that they're independent, discreet requests. I would have liked to have heard the outcome of the, the resolution with city council, but since we, we don't have an affirmation on that yet, I do think that it is.
I will simply say it's a little bit different. I know that there was some discussion, including some of the commissioners, last time here about continuing the, the delay on a decision on this request pending some information from the, the surveys and what have you. And I, I would suggest that, I don't think that is appropriate. I, I think we have an applicant, an applicant has gone through the process, an applicant has apparently paid a fee. It happens to be the EDA, but it's still an applicant. So I think, while I'm not sitting here at this particular point in time suggesting yes or, or approval or disapproval, I am suggesting that we do, I believe we do need to take action on it and, and move a recommendation forward to council at this point in time. I think we owe that to an applicant.
Regardless of the review that results and the revisions that result, we currently have an adopted comprehensive plan. So we can't, we can't cease to. The, you know, so I agree with you.
And I also would point out, going a little bit different direction, is that if, if one reads the, the guidelines under General Commercial, I know that there have been some concerns about it'll turn into a Walmart and those sorts of things. And, and if you read the, the directions there, there is very, very little that can happen under General Commercial by right. The things that people have seemed to be worried about, a drugstore, a department store, a grocery store, a gas station, and those things, they could happen, but they require a conditional use permit, which means they come back here, go back to city council, and come back to public hearings. So those things are just not able to happen by right at this point in time.
Yeah, I, I agree with you. When I did read through the permitted uses in the General Commercial District and read everything that does need a special use permit, that really set my mind at ease. And then also, I know Debbie had, in a couple work sessions ago, had advised that council has directed staff to revisit the uses, permitted uses, in General Commercial, and that that would be an upcoming work session as well, so that's something to revisit. I could see no advantage to having six continuous parcels under one owner zoned differently in something like this. And so I think it just makes sense.
My only comment, and this is more of a curiosity or to be proactive, I know there is an additional EDA parcel, 18-1-127. It's not quite contiguous with the others, but it's a little bit kitty-corner, and it is landlocked with it. And I was just wondering if that might come up under a future land use discussion at R and D.
We have someone in the audience that may be able to help us on that, and I'd like to ask him to come and answer that question. And he'll introduce himself.
Good evening. Donald Booth, Chairman of the EDA. At this point in time, there is no plans for that landlocked parcel. As you properly observed, it is landlocked. It came up two years ago, give or take, three years ago. It's been a little while ago. And it was the right opportunity at that point in time, but there is no master plan for that at this point in time. Certainly, as council comes down with whatever recommendations that may be coming forward as it relates to the bigger compilation of the north side of Victory Boulevard, certainly that would, we would like a seat at that table as a property owner of a landlocked parcel there. But at this point in time, there has been no discussions of specificity related to that parcel.
Do I also have anything they'd like to ask Mr. Booth while he's here? Question him. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Booth. Discussion.
I just have one more question. As part of the comprehensive plan update, will we be, I guess in conjunction with council, visiting the Big Woods area as a whole and looking at if we want to keep R and D for some of those parcels or an overlay district? Is that whole area going to come into consideration for, to be revisited during the comp plan update? If there's any plan for that?
Actually, I think that process will probably occur when city council is looking at the particular zoning districts, whether or not changes need to occur. I believe that that would probably be the best time for any type of changes to actually know that that's been an ongoing issue for city council. So at this point, I need to wait for direction from them. But I do not believe that at this point, unless the public hearing, you know, unveils a different idea of the public as to how they want to see the Big Woods developed, I don't know that there's going to be a whole lot of changes going to occur in the future land use map at this point. We certainly didn't see anything through the survey results that would prompt any type of major change, so... Kind of depends on what the Planning Commission would like to do. I mean, if you would really like to sponsor some type of changes, we could certainly set during the comp plan update process.
Are we prepared, then, to make a motion to accept as written? All right, we have a motion to accept the proposed rezoning. Do we have a motion to second?
Second.
All right, we take the vote on that, please?
Aye.
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 Okay, new business, election of officers. You can postpone it if you'd like.
It's what up to the group, whatever they say. Comfortable for the group?
We've got one missing. Two. I'm sorry, we got Lee and, I was thinking Lee, but we've got Gus, too. It's up to y'all, whatever you want to do.
We know where it's going. I think we just go there and be done with it.
All right, yeah, let's do it. All right, let's do it. We postponed it one time, let's do it. All right, can we do, I think what we do usually...
That would be fine, or either you can take them separately, whichever...
That is what we've done in one of the last number of years.
Okay, so what do you have?
We have chairman, vice chairman, and appointment of the clerk, which is Karen. And I failed to mention, I'm sorry, Cheryl. Cheryl is our deputy clerk that will back up, and this is her first night at the Planning Commission meeting. Cheryl is in our office, and there's staff support, we're a bunch of crazy people that work in the back, so appreciate her being with us this evening. And she'll probably be back at some point in the future, but that's Cheryl Miller.
So it would be those... Want to make a motion to accept as Debbie has read? Or do you have people you would like to substitute? We're open to that, too, certainly, but we just...
I'll make a motion that the group we've...
Second.
Take the vote on that, and we'll be done with this.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
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 Mr. Travis?
Aye.
Chairwoman Travis?
Aye. In advance to the close of the agenda items, with the exception of anything that Danan would like to... Danan, do you have anything you would like to address the Planning Commission? Let us know, anything we should know?
I would just like to offer my thanks again to Commissioner Emmett, and Commissioner Travis for their work, and the members of the CPT, the steering committee, for their work on the survey, the members of the CPT, and to the volunteers who are both here and at home for their work in tabulating the survey three weeks, three nights, every week. So just, their efforts were very much appreciated, and we were able to get this thing tabulated as quickly and efficiently as possible.
Currently, we have no public hearing items for the August meeting, so it could be the work session. If anything changes, we'll let you know at the time or in the future. One other item, I'm pressing to get the comp plan through the Planning Commission process by the end of the year, because I'm planning to retire at the end of the year, and I really do not want this document hanging out there. But that should not be the only, you know, reason why we move forward. But I just think it would make it easier on the Planning Commission if we could just hand off a document to city council to a new community development director that hopefully he can move right through the public hearing process through city council with... We appreciate the work that everyone has done, and we will try to keep it on track if you all agree with that timeline. So, anyway, thank you.
Sean?
Angie?
Thank you again for all of the data entry volunteers that helped the CPT survey results get tabulated. It was a lot of work, and thank you so much for taking the time in the evenings to do that.
I only did nine of those, and so I really appreciate the fact that I loved you. I did nine, I thought that was a tough bill, so good job. You know, that was, I mean, that was, I guess the...
1,294 to go. You did such a good survey, so many people, I guess, you know, that's an indication of what a good job you guys did. So many people filled it out. And I make a motion, too, that you're not allowed to retire ever yet until we all can retire with you.
Right, right. She has to stay.
You'd do such a great job for us every week. Thank you.
She has to stay. Wish we could talk her into it. I don't see... No use. Bill?
Well, just really quickly, because it's been said already, but I had the, you know, the privilege to work with the CPT for the last 14 months on the steering committee, and for me and for Lee Fenison, who's our commissioner, she's the vice chair of the steering committee. She's not here today, but if anybody wants to know, she's at a state planning commissioner training session, so she's really not goofing off. But she asked me to pass on, and for both she and I, I really want to pass on a very sincere appreciation to the members of the CPT who have worked very diligently for about 14 months now. Now, just, I don't want to miss anybody, but Rob Lyles, the chair of the committee, is here again, and Rob has put an untold number of hours, I'm not even going to try to guess. Angie Emmett was a member of the CPT long before she was coerced into joining the Planning Commission. I got Janice Powell back here. She was very active in the group. I think they're the only members of the CPT that are here tonight, but I do want to sort of make a public record that we appreciate the hard work of... We had 12 volunteers. We lost a couple, one strictly work-related, but really, this team put in an awful lot of work. I think the results show their efforts, and I appreciate it.
And I can't say enough, you all have done a great job. And we mentioned at the work session, in Pacosa, we've been very fortunate in past years. We have had citizens groups that have always stepped up to the plate and done an excellent job in helping gather the information that's necessary to input of the review of the comprehensive plan. And we extend our sincere thanks to this group as well, who has done an excellent job. And I would like to also thank Lee and Bill, because they have been the steering members, and I'm sure without their help, you could not have been as efficient as you have been. Because I know both of them, and particularly, I've worked with Bill long enough to know his capabilities, and he is an excellent steering member to any group. So I am thankful that he and Lee took this task on, because it's been a lot for them, too, and I really appreciate, and on behalf of all of us on planning, thank you and Lee for that job, too. So with that said, I guess that's the end of the meeting. We've done all we can do. Thank you. We adjourned tonight.
I saw you need some help, so.
No, actually, we appreciate it.
And if nothing else, we'll...